I want to call to order the Tuesday, June the first, 2021, meeting of the Iredell County Board of Commissioners. At this time, I'd ask everyone to please bow your head in prayer for our country and our community and our citizens.
The Pledge of Allegiance is the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good evening, everyone. Running down our agenda, we have a few adjustments to the agenda. I'd ask our county manager, Beth Moll, to please summarize those.
Thank you, Chairman Mallory. We have the removal of personnel from closed session. And then we have a few updated items to place in your book for the board. One is supplemented information. Actually, this is updated documents, so to replace the documents in your book for item 8.11 with the ones on the dais for you. And then the other, it's additional documentation, which are meeting minutes from the Fire Tax Oversight Committee, which is supplemental for items 8.7 through 8.10.
Ms. Moll, is there any additional adjustments from commission members? Is there a motion to approve the agenda as adjusted?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Hap. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. There are no presentations or special awards this evening, nor are there any appointments before the board. So we move directly into our public hearings. The first, and under item 7.1, is a public hearing to consider a request from applicant Kristi Allen of the Allen Team Incorporated to rezone approximately 2.95 acres along Stutz Road. And Mr. Matthew Todd will tee that up for everybody.
Good evening. The rezoning request we have before us tonight is on Stutz Road, outlined in blue on the screen. The request is to rezone from RA to GB. That's straight rezoning. It does lie within the 2030 Horizon Plan as commercial, corridor commercial, you can see there on the screen. Properties adjacent to existing GB zoning. And with the watershed restrictions in place, it's going to limit it to a smaller scale GB use. Staff is supporting this request. Planning Board also voted unanimously to support this request. You can see an aerial of the property. This is 2021 aerial showing the existing commercial uses. There is a current single-family house on the property. Just a few pictures of the site. That's looking up Stutz Road, back toward Broyles School Road. Site's on your left. Looking directly across the road. And looking south on Stutz with the site on our right. There was no opposition at Planning Board either, and we've only had a couple calls asking questions about it. No opposition at this point. And I'd be happy to answer any additional questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Todd? Well, we only have one individual that has signed up for a public hearing. Let me go ahead and open the public hearing. And that is Kristi Allen, the applicant. So would you like to share anything, Ms. Allen?
I'm really here just for questions. It definitely fits into a general business, as you can see from the map. And I think it's a good fit for that community.
Very good. Well, that's all that's signed up. I would inquire of anyone else that's in attendance, if you'd like to be heard. Being in hearing none, I will close the public hearing and ask if there's a motion.
I make a motion.
Okay. You have to read it.
I'm sorry, I didn't see it.
On the last page.
There we go. Motion to approve the zoning map amendment and to make a finding that said approved is reasonable and in public interest because the property lies within the 2030 Horizon Plain corridor commercial design designation. It is adjacent to Verizon existing commercial use and critical watershed restrictions should limit development to a small-scale GB use into the future.
Motion by Commissioner Brown. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion opposed, those opposed, like sign. Hearing none, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, Ms. Allen, and good luck. The second item we have is a public hearing under 7.2 to consider the proposed fiscal year 2021, 2022 budget for Iredell County. And Ms. Moll will go ahead and tee that up, and I believe we have Ms. Cheek who will also be double teaming.
Absolutely. Thank you. If you recall, this is the budget that was presented the first of May to the board. We did have three subsequent budget workshops, and from those workshops, there were some additions and revisions to the recommended budget, which results in a general fund budget of $236,155,420. The recommended budget maintains the tax rate at 53.75 cents per 100 valuation and maintains the all-county fire tax rate at nine cents per 100 valuation. If the board would like for me to go through the revisions, I can certainly do that, but there were, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen revisions, clarifications that resulted out of the budget workshop, which are all incorporated in this.
All right. Are there any questions from commissioners? Comments? Okay. At this time, I will open the public hearing on the budget for 2021, 2022, which in round figures is $236 million. Is there, if no one's signed up to be heard, I would inquire of anyone in the audience, if you'd like to be heard. Nobody on the back row standing up? I'll close the public hearing, and I'll ask if there's a motion.
I'd like to.
To approve and adopt the fiscal year 2021, 2022 budget ordinance.
Sure, I'd like to make that motion.
Motion by Vice Chairman Neder. Any further discussion?
I'm scared.
Yeah. We all are, right?
That's right.
Always are. No further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay, we now move on to administrative matters that were appropriate for our consent agenda. These are typically technical in nature, presented by staff at our pre-agenda meeting, which is held at 5:00 in this same chamber. It is an open public meeting, and we encourage the public to tune in or to come and hear those presentations if something sparks their interest. But we dispose of these through a consent motion. And so at this time, I would ask Ms. Moll if she would please summarize those items for our consent agenda, and then we'll pending a motion.
Absolutely. Thank you, Chairman Mallory. The first item was approval and adoption of a budget ordinance for fiscal year 2020, 21 for special revenue funds. And that, again, is clarification regarding this current budget. Request from Finance Department for approval and accept American Rescue Plan funding in the adoption of a budget ordinance for the American Rescue Plan Special Revenue Fund. This is just establishing the special revenue fund. The determination of how those funds will be spent will be done once we get final clarification from the U.S. Department of Treasury. A request from Finance Department to consider calling for a public hearing on June 15, 2021, in regard to changes to the Iredell County Code of Ordinances related to library fees. A request from the library for approval to apply for an easy grant from the State Library of North Carolina. Request from Emergency Medical Services for approval to sign a multi-year contract with prepaid health plans and transportation brokers. This is a contract that we're still working on as part of Medicaid transformation, but due to the timeframe consent was given to go ahead and approve those contracts on behalf of the board. Request from the Fire Tax Oversight Committee for approval of Budget Amendment Number 46 to allocate $14,200 to West Iredell Volunteer Fire Department. From the countywide fire tax unreserved, undesignated fund balance to pay off a loan for self-contained breathing apparatus. A request from the Fire Tax Oversight Committee for approval of Budget Amendment Number 47 to allocate $3,663 to Wayside Volunteer Fire Department. From the countywide fire tax undesignated, unreserved fund balance to replace automated external defibrillators. A request from the Fire Tax Oversight Committee for approval of Budget Amendment Number 48 to allocate $54,529 from the countywide fire tax undesignated, unreserved fund balance to South Iredell Volunteer Fire Department to cover additional costs associated with the purchase of a new fire apparatus that will replace two existing apparatus. A request from the Fire Tax Oversight Committee to approve Budget Amendment Number 49 to allocate $15,000 to the South Iredell Volunteer Fire Department. From the countywide fire tax unreserved, undesignated fund balance to purchase gear racks and upgraded light LED fixtures. Request from Iredell County Economic Development Corporation for approval of the revamped Technical Assistance Program Grant Agreement in the amount of $160,000, and this can be funded through ARP funds. Consideration for a request from Iredell County Economic Development for approval of economic development incentive for Project Paragon. This was an item we had a public hearing on back in May, and the motion is to approve an economic incentive up to $129,643 over a five-year period based on the company's investment of up to $7,875,000, creation of up to 235 new jobs, and contingent upon a contract being executed within 180 days. A request from Planning and Development for ratification and approval of the vote on text amendments to the Land Development Code from the May 18, 2021 meeting. Request from Planning and Development to consider calling for a public hearing on June 15, 2021, at 7:00 p.m. in regard to our requests made by Jeffrey Sanudo to lease zoning a subdivision jurisdiction to the town of Mooresville. An update regarding short-term rentals relative to the Lake Norman area. And then finally, a request from Administration for approval to award contract for the main library mechanical upgrade project to associated heating and air in the amount of $947,000.
Thank you, Ms. Moll. Is, are there any comments? Is there a motion to approve our consent agenda?
Motion to approve, Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Norman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. We have no announcements or any vacancies occurring on boards or commissions this evening. I will note that we did have a number of announcements two weeks ago. We are going to be taking action on those appointments to boards and commissions at our next meeting. So there's a full four weeks between our notice and that decision. So we would encourage folks to go to the county website and to look to see if there are any of these positions that you are interested in. We're looking for solid citizens that want to serve the community and provide a service to us as a board and as a community. The greater participation we have across the board, the better, and we like new people to apply, so we have the ability to freshen boards and get new perspectives. So please check those and submit your applications if you haven't already done so. We have no appointments therefore to boards this evening, but will at our next meeting. Is there any unfinished business to come before the commission? This is not a public comment period. Is there any new business? None. Have the county managers report?
Because we had a healthy agenda, my report is very simple and brief, and it is just appreciation to the budget team and the department directors with their hard work regarding the budget, and appreciation to the board for approving that budget. That gives us decent time to go ahead and prepare and get ready to scale back, finish one year, and start a new year. So we appreciate all your trust and confidence in us, and certainly appreciate our team as they work diligently to bring a budget in, bring it balanced. And our department directors, a lot of appreciation goes to them.
Exclamation point end of.
That's it. Yes, sir. That is.
Well, I feel constrained to pile on a little bit to that, Mark. Our tremendous effort by all of our departments and our staff for crunching the numbers and reviewing how their individual department plans nest within our strategic vision and the strategic goals that each department has formulated. And it's just been a, it's a process that has gone on for well-nigh six months, really kind of starting in its infancy in December with some guidance as far as strategic objectives. And this is the culminating event. And the proof in the pudding is, you know, we're a growing county, and we have approved additional positions to meet service demands. So the budget has grown, but the tax rate has not grown because Iredell County is a growing county, and if you grow the pie, you can expand services and not have to divide the pie by taxing people in ever-increasing amounts. And so it's a good formula. And you saw some of the economic development. Well, you didn't see them, they were approved this evening. Just two projects out of a number that are coming to Iredell County. Very successful effort through our Iredell Economic Development Corporation to bring not only new businesses to Iredell County, but to assist existing businesses and expansions and workforce development. So, and I can't fail to neglect to also remember that our tax office has a collection rate that is north of 99%, which is a phenomenal.
99.2.
I don't know, maybe it's a record, but it's always up there among the top collectors in the state.
It's amazing. It is amazing. They do a wonderful job.
So, that being said, we did have a closed session pursuant to economic development presentations pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11 subsection 84. There is one item to be reported out, and one action item, and the others are not ready for any action. So, have a motion?
I make a motion to call for a public hearing on June 15, 2021, at 7:00 p.m. regarding the maximum economic development incentive of $253,004 over a five-year period for Project Champion, based on a $14 million investment in Iredell County.
A motion by Commissioner Brown. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The public hearing will be set two weeks from now. And then finally, we have one item that we had on our consent agenda was an update on county construction projects. And Mr. David Salivi is going to tee those up for us. We had one briefing on the main library's mechanical update project, which we approved in our consent agenda. This is an opportunity, I think, for folks in the public to hear about all the different projects that Iredell County has in the hopper that are ongoing. So for the next three meetings, probably, we'll have about a 30-minute update from Mr. Salivi and give people an idea of the ongoing capital and maintenance requirements of the county and where we are in those projects.
I recall, I think you said that you like dividing up into thirds.
Thirty minutes, as far as you get, 30 minutes, then roll over another 30 minutes. Our next meeting, two weeks from now. And then the next 30 minutes would be the following meeting, and then, you know, update as necessary.
Okay.
On a monthly basis after that.
I did a little checking on your question on the efficiency rating of the ERV. In the mid, early and mid 90s, they were like at 15 to 20%, but we're up to 60, they think about 65% on this, on this unit, which is pretty good. It's not as good as the SEER ratings that you're talking about, but this exchanges the heat or cool from incoming air or exhaust air into the incoming air. So that's, that's the best we can do for you. Okay?
Thank you.
And that project is funded, will be funded with ARP funds. Correct. Okay. The, the next project is the Government Center South Parking Lot Expansion Project. It's scheduled to start late summer, and late summer, remember, is in, could be as late as September 21st. We're working through the Town of Mooresville approval process, which is quite extensive. I will lean on Manager Jones because I inherited this project a couple years, well, within the past two years, to kind of kickstart it, but it, but it had been going on for some time, so I'll, if you don't, oh, Manager, I'm sorry, Moll.
No, you're good.
It's taken me a while. This Moll thing has really got me going.
Anything nowadays?
Everybody smiles when I.
Give her an opportunity to dodge the question. She can say, you're done.
I'll answer to anything nowadays. I've been called a lot of things.
I called her Beth during the day, but I'm trying to, Moll thing has taken a while. Go ahead.
This project, if, if the board, those that have been on the board for quite some time will recall, this project goes all the way back to the 17, 18 fiscal year budget. This project is a project where that parking lot needed to be redone. We had talked about redoing the parking lot. We had gone to Mooresville to get them to, to give over Evergreen Lane to us, the back portion, so we could redo that parking lot. So there's been a lot of conversations, and Mooresville actually did that. So the front portion, Mooresville still has. The back portion is part of our parking lot, with the understanding that we were going to redo and redesign the parking lot to maximize the parking spaces there. Then, if the board will recall, we were getting ready to do that. We were negotiating and renegotiating our lease with Deener. Part of that lease was us working with them to reclaim some unused parking spaces because we needed more parking spaces. And that whole gated lot area were parking spaces that were, Deener had as part of their lease, and they weren't using it all. So we went back and renegotiated the lease, reclaimed some parking spaces. Now that we finally have that done, and we didn't start the parking, we didn't start the parking lot until we got that lease approved. And if you'll recall, it took us a few years to get that lease approved. So when we finally got the lease approved and signed with Deener, that's when we really started hitting the ground with redesigning this parking lot. And we knew exactly how many spaces we were going to be able to reclaim. So that's, that's kind of where Mr. Salivi picked up the project. Now that we have that done, he's picked up the project to actually design the parking lot to maximize the usage. Mr. Salivi?
Okay, thank you. Okay, now, this project was funded in two years, two separate CIP years. First was $450,000 in, in the FY '19 budget, and then this past FY '21 budget, another $500,000. Now, we don't, we don't know what it's going to cost. We, at one time, we were probably in the 850 to 950 range. This was back when the project was first looked at in 17 and 18. Costs are up a little bit this year.
At one time, Tommy Bowles and Jeff McDealy said they were going to.
They were going to buy a roller and do it themselves.
Do it themselves. Well, I wish we could, but these are only our estimates. Bid day tells it all. Okay?
This right behind the building?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. This is Evergreen Street. Evergreen is what runs down the side of the building, and there's some parallel parking right up here. I'm going to show you a more detailed picture of what it looks like, but this is, this is the building right here. This is the old Lawrence Hospital. So if you were looking out Lawrence Hospital, out the back, you would see where the Sheriff's Office parks.
Right.
And that parking lot is a pothole city.
Right.
It's pretty rough. Then there's a large grassed area right here. There was a metal building that was a storage area, and I think at one time might have been EMS. I think.
It was.
I think it was. Well, in preparation for this project, we've already taken that building down and repurposed it at solid waste. So that's gone. And right here, they show two little small squares, and they look small, but they were actually two 30,000-gallon fuel oil tanks with some product and other things in it. So those have been removed. So those have been removed. So we were trying to do a lot of this prep work ahead of time to take it out of the project bid, and we were able to handle that, that work, even though we couldn't do it in-house, we were able to manage it and, and use, you know, do it in-house as, as far as getting bids to do it, not have to run it through a contractor. Okay, right here is your entrance into the court area. Again, Evergreen Street. And we found out, let me add this, excuse me, that Evergreen Street is only to about right here where the, where the sidewalk is, and this goes into the fire escape. This part of Evergreen Street belongs to the Town of Mooresville. This part, the hatched out area, is actually county property. It's not Evergreen Street anymore. And that happened when the building was conveyed to the county back in the early 2000s, back when we started finding all the skeletons in the building. Now, over here, currently, this area is Deener parking. All of it. It is gated here, it's gated here, and at any given day, you go down there now, maybe 10% used. But they, but their lease, they pay for it. So they, they own those spaces currently. Now, I'll show you the spaces that we're picking up and how we're going to divide this parking lot up. So that's kind of the overview, high level of what the project looks like. Now, again, the building here, this is now, this will now be Deener parking. And all the landscape and all the fancy one ways and two-way streets and, and the, what they call, at least I think they call it traffic calming devices, which makes people slow down. All that is requirements of the Town of Mooresville through their TRC. We've, we finally, after quite a few months, quite a few months, we finally got approval with just a few things that have to be included in the construction documents that's coming up now. But we got approval to do that. Now, we had more parking spaces, and this snake-looking thing right here, TRC looked at it, Mooresville TRC looked at it, and we had to, we were able to scale it down a little bit, but we had to provide a fire lane for fire trucks to be able to get through. Up close to the buil, this building, there's a private, I think it's a doctor's office or something right in here. So they had to be able to get to here with the fire trucks, and they also had to be able to get to the back of our building with a fire truck. So now, Evergreen stops here, but our parking lot has a fire lane that they can get through. And that took, that took a few of the spaces that we were going to use. So what you have, if, if I back, if, if I back up, you've got Evergreen now going all the way through. What we're going to have is Evergreen really stops. We're able to put in a few more parallel places here. We reconfigured this, and Deener has their 100 spaces that they leasing now, right through here. And that also includes handicap parking, which had to be configured and placed in a space where they can get to the ramp, this ramp right here that goes into the court system. Now, the, now the trick was getting these spaces close enough to a crosswalk that it was, we were only so many feet, and I don't know what that number is, from the entrance for, for wheelchair, wheelchair entrance. And also here, we've got a couple handicap spaces here now. The rest of it's taken up by court and whoever. I guess they're first come, first served. So we have these required number of spaces, these required number of spaces for Deener parking. There'll be a gated entrance here, and they will circulate through this section. Right now, right here, maybe back in here, they've got these metal carports and wooden buildings that they store boats and boat equipment for the water quality folks. So that will be inside of their lot, so they can use it however they like, but we're providing that many spaces. Now, we're picking up, as a county, we're picking up these spaces. We'll have an open entrance to Carpenter Street. So we'll have an open entrance to there. We're picking up this end of the parking spaces. And then we're picking up all the grassed area, if you remember the grassed area where the building was. All that is now turned into parking spaces. We were able to salvage out some parallel parking here. These, these dumpsters here are now here under a tree, so we're going to be relocating those up. Now, this is looking, this is about where, this is looking on Evergreen Street, and this speedup is real close to where Evergreen Street stops. Okay? So from this point here, the Carpenter Street is now part of our parking lot with, with the new plan. You can see their fenced-in area, and I'll show you another, yeah, that's what, that's what we're looking at right there. But let, let me, right here is what I was wanting to show you. You can see, this is the way it normally is. A few parking spaces in here, they've got a couple buildings here and a boat shed back here. They only have one entrance with the new plan. And then our parking spaces take over about right here and go all the way down. Okay? Yeah, there we go.
What's the max number of parking spots that they typically used?
What they used?
Yeah.
That's about all they use.
Well.
It's a lot less than a hundred.
Well, that's during COVID.
Over the, they used more.
COVID, yeah.
Prior to COVID, they used, they used much more than that. They never used the full lot, which is why we were able to renegotiate and reclaim some of those spaces.
These are, these are Deener cars, state cars that stay there. But their, but their parking lot was maybe this much, never full, all the way down. And I've got those numbers on another slide that will kind of show you how many they'll have and what we're gaining. Now, this next view is from Carpenter Street. We're looking that way. That's how empty it is now. And they, again, they, I don't think I've ever seen any parking down from this building toward Carpenter. Okay? Our next view is from the roof, actually looking when the metal building was there, and this is the space that we're picking up more parking. This building is now gone. These, well, I don't have the pictures of it, but the tanks were removed here. And actually, it was a large area of excavation to get those out. There's with the building, the old EMS building, that's what's left now, is just a pad. And all this will be part of the project along with, excuse me, along with Duke Power lighting. There is some Duke Power lighting now, but the city requires a certain amount of lighting, shielded lighting, where we don't have what the backwash or overwash of lighting onto other places, which is, which would be the homes or, or other businesses. Because these are homes here, this is a business of some form right here, and then there's a, and then there's a home over here on this side. Now, looking from Carpenter back toward the building, this is also area that we're picking up all the way down to here. These entrances will stay the same. This tree will be gone, and these are the dumpsters that we're moving up on the other end, right here. We currently have 159 spaces total, and our proposed parking plan will be 215, and Deener gets 100 of that. Right now, we don't, I would say that we probably have 25 or 30 out back. So our total, total spaces is 215. And before the fire lane, we were up in 230, 225, 230 spaces. But the fire lane took a lot of our parking just because we had to give that flow through Any questions on that so far? This project, again, is in construction drawing now. We, we hope to go out to bid August. Usually takes about a month after the bid to, to mobilize and start moving dirt. I will say, let me back up. There's been a lot of questions, how do you do this? Because right now, Deener has so many spaces here, we're parking here. How did we tear up their space and, and vice versa? So we've, we're talking with the Deener folks who actually, actually work there, and the first phase of the project, our folks that are parking here will cone this off, and they will park, oops, they will park in here, county parking here, on, on this end of the Deener lot. And which means all of this section can be dug up and prepared and made into what it looks like here. Then, when we're done with that, Deener will park over on this side, along with some of our, best we can. I mean, it's, it's going to be just a nightmare of traffic for a while. And then we tear up this side, or part of it, the best we can, and accommodate Deener so that when the project's over, they have their space, we have our space, but in, but in between, it's, it's going to take a little bit of give and take. It's just good old going there, talking with them for a little bit. Okay? Interesting projects, been on the hook for a while. It was a good project to inherit, and we've, and we've got a good relationship with the Deener folks that, that work there. Dean Lael, our contract manager, well, whoever our contract manager is at the time, will be working with the state as far as ensuring that they're okay with how we move their people across to this section or, or back, you know, from here to here during construction. A lot of signage, a lot of hands-on TLC, just working with the people. Okay? Any more, any questions on the parking? I hope it doesn't take the 950 to a million, but, but you never know. We got a lot of stormwater work to do. There's a lot of impervious surface that we're working with. Okay? Government Center South project, now this, this project, we hope is closed out this month. We've got, I think we've got very satisfied Sheriff's Office down there, turned into a great place, got a very satisfied DSS. They're looking for more space, of course. They always looking for a little bit more, but what we gave them fits the bill, and they're very satisfied with it. Mole's report to you, this, I think you're, the last one talked about one last little change order. Well, prior, the, the change order we handled this past week, we, we submitted the last pay app, pay application to hold in building. So that project, except for closeout documents that we get in our hands, that project is complete, but not officially closed out till we get our documents in hand. But there was one change order, and it's real interesting, and it was in your report. So I, I know you got, I know you're kind of questioning, why in the world was something this small? How did it slip through the cracks? Well, if you, in your notes, it talked about fire riser niches. Okay? Now, a fire riser niche, I'm going to show it to you. This is what our space looked like. Well, this is really cleaned up. This was after demo. But this is a fire riser niche, and, and you've seen them in buildings, and it's, and it's a, it's a brass valve with a lot of hoses hanging on it. That's a niche, and it's for the fire riser. This fire riser, there's two of them that we worked with. These risers are from the bottom floor up, they're all in a row. One large pipe, these niches are all the way up, same place all the way up, same place from the elevator, same place from the, from the elevators and the, the fire, the fire stairs, escape stairs. Well, when the building was vacated by the hospital, it's the only thing that we can surmise, when it was vacated by the hospital, there wasn't a owner, there wasn't a buyer. And these things can freeze. So at some point, the fire, the fire risers were disconnected. And this was about, well, the last calendar, you remember the paper tear-off calendars? I found one in the operating room down there right before we got started, and it was like September something of 1999. That was the last one before they tore it off. Well, somewhere right after that, the building was sold or, or vacated, and they moved to the new Lake Norman Hospital, and these fire risers were disconnected somewhere. We don't know where there's, we don't know where it's at. Well, the fire inspectors for the Town of Mooresville come by and they, and they see it, and they assume that they're always, that they've always been in, in service. So somewhere in 2003 or '04, whenever they, the county bought it and remember built the court, put Health Department down there, these fire risers were not on the plans because the engineers knew that they had been disconnected. Okay? So we got that on one side, and then on the other side, we've got the fire inspectors checking it off every so many months or whatever. Okay, they're there. Okay? So they weren't on the original plan, so we take those plans and we, and we fast forward to about two years ago when we started on this. Not on the plans. Okay, still not on plans, they're in the wall, plans show, cover them up, they're not being used. So these niches, there's two of them, get covered up, nothing but drywall, not on the plans, not as far as active, Fire Marshal come back, comes back through and says, oh, these things have to be uncovered. So we got, this is niche on the fourth floor, that's right here, best picture I could find of it. This was a niche on the second floor. There's, there's the fire escape door. And there's that one, before and after, I mean, well, we worked on it. But if you notice, this one has no hose, hose is hanging on it. This one here has a rack, but no hoses. So we get it all done, and we, and that is what the change order was for, was to uncover it, make, make that blanked-off hole look like this. And now they look great. So we take a trash can and we put underneath this thing, and we open the valve, it's dry. There is no water. Fire inspector says, well, it has to have water. So that's where we're at now. Okay? So we uncover it, never on the plans, disconnected, and now the Fire Marshal says it has to be active.
Because you can see it.
Because, well, you could see it before it. Nobody ever opened the valve since 1999. They don't know. Okay? So what, 22 years? So what that means is, this was not, yeah, what this means for me is, for Old Niama here, it means that this part of it, making this active was not on the project. So our contractors were not held to that. But however, Facilities has taken this, and they are trying to locate how this thing was connected, how it was attached, and where the water is supposed, supposed to be coming from, and good luck. So, but that is what that change order, that $1,000 to do all this, get all this put back in there, that you read on your report, that's what it was talking about.
But we still don't have water.
Haven't had water since 1999.
Probably the whole pipe, all four floors has to be replaced. I have to go in and tear all that out.
Well, there's nothing to replace it. All the floors look just like this, dry, except the bottom floor had a little bit of black sediment in it. But somewhere between there and the street, it's been disconnected, 22 years of it. So who, so there, but that's another great project, is, is just to get it wet again. But for all these years, Fire Marshal's been going by checking it off. Yep, it's there. It looks great.
And, and just for clarification, we can't hold our
And, and just for clarification, we can't hold our contractor to to the street, figuring out where the line is the streets. Our facility services is taking over that piece. The contractor's done, cause the interior of the building is done.
We don't have a three-inch line in the basement.
Uh, there's a lot of lines in the basement. Some are active and some are just abandoned. And some have been repiped over 22 years.
Well, for gosh sakes, figure out where the line goes before you do the parking lot. Because it probably goes right under there.
Yes. But I think, I think if we go in the basement, we're gonna find the three-inch line that's, that's live and, and hook it up to it. We think it's at the street. There's a separate lines at the street. And the street is not Carpenter, not Evergreen, but the one
In front of it.
Yeah. Yeah. Wherever that is, because there's fire, there's fire lines already attached there. That's where they think it is. But yes, we will not be digging up the parking lot till we figure out this. Okay. And that is what the project looked like after demo. I, I got hundreds of pictures, which I, I didn't bring. I'm glad, I know you're glad, of what it looks like now, but it, but it really turned out nice.
We've been up there.
Okay, you, well, y'all see, this is the hallway going to the sheriff's office. That's what it looks like. Well, what you have. Okay, very good. Any questions on that one? Because that's, that's the last piece. You tell me when, just throw a flag or something at me. I, I don't have a watch. I, I can go for days.
Button up on your 30 minutes.
Okay, I can go for days. Okay. The government, you want me to cover this last one then? Government Center Drainage Project?
Yes.
That's this building. Uh, that's getting ready to start. This project had quite a few fundings since 2018 in the CIP, where there were some structural issues, I think, and this was prior to me working on this project. Some structural issues in the, in the roof area. But there was some funding left over in the CIP from MAPS, 283,000. 432,000 in the CIP in 2019 for renovations. There was 543,000 in 2020 for Phase Two, which is this project. And then, there's 1,129,000 in the CIP for FY22. And then Phase Two, at Phase One, and in Phase Two, there were 600,000 in the CIP for FY22, which you just approved. And that was part of the new entryway project. Well, we've already, actually, you, you've already approved this contract with prior CIP funding. Okay? And this project is scheduled for mobilization. And I say scheduled, because if you, if you live, I mean, it's, everything sounds great here. But when you get out into the project world, they're here when you see them, a lot of times, unfortunately. But we're scheduled to start Monday. Okay? And this project is real interesting. You approved it, so we've kinda gone through how the project is gonna be built. But this is the front steps. Okay, right out, right out here. And we're gonna be starting this project right here at the breezeway, where you go to the south wing. We're gonna be starting on the front side, this side of the breezeway. And the reason why I say we start there is that, if you recall, until we approve otherwise, we can only dig up eight feet at a time. Cause this foundation is made up of lots of different things. We don't wanna undermine the fa, the building. We don't wanna weaken it on one side. So this thing is eight feet at a time, per side. Which means I can do, we can do eight feet here, eight feet here, eight feet here, or eight feet in the front, all at the same time. Now, once we get moving, we hope, our structural engineer will say, well, you can do a lot more than that. You can go 20 feet at a time. Because this is looking like this. So we'll start here. And the entrance at the south wing, which is at the breezeway, all that'll be closed. We've got a ramp project that's gonna be put in on the seventh. That starts at the front, front steps and it goes out for handicap accessibility. Goes out to Court Street. Or the Court Street sidewalk. Also, it'll be the entrance for everybody else that would normally come in here. That means the public will be coming in this entrance. The, these doors, right under us here, you know, the two big wooden ones that go into the hallway, those will, those will be closed. We put kind of a, well, we thought we was gonna put a Dutch door in. the recep, well-
Manager's office. The manager's office.
The manager's office reception area. But we ended up putting a glass, so they can open their door up. And they've got a glass area that they can see, talk under, and then there's wood underneath. I didn't even know it was done. It looked, it looked like it's been part of the building. And, and I, I would encourage you to look at it when you go down. You really can't tell it's there. But what's gonna happen is, we, we went to the board of elections and we borrowed some of their ribbon barricades that they use for elections. So we'll be setting it up. So when you walk in the front door, the public walks in the front door, they will follow it and it'll take them right to that entrance, or right to that window. And there'll be someone there to, to speak to them. There'll be a doorbell there as well, just in case somebody steps out. And they can press it. And, and, and the way this hallway is, you can hear it all the way up and down the hall. And then, the receptionist, whoever it is at the time, will call, just like we do over in the south wing lobby. Will come out, someone will come out, meet them, and escort them through the doors onto wherever they're going, and then escort them out. And that is until this section gets opened up. That's this section right in here. There, there's the lobby. So we'll be digging all this up, and this will be closed until we get this done. This ramp going down toward the back of the tire shop, 220 Restaurant. That ramp, that, our part will be closed until we get the construction done. Then, once this part, once this part's finished, then we close the whole front. This will be opened back up for use. And there'll be a ramp here that runs, since they cannot roll around here anymore. Handicaps can't roll here. There'll be a ramp from here all the way down to where Admin parks now, which is right on the other side of this white building here. And Admin will be parking somewhere else. And, and we've got signage for, for handicap parking. So there'll be a ramp that'll run from the other, the other side of this white building right here, all the way up to this ramp and takes them into the lobby. Actually, it'll run right into here. And it's about 70 foot long, so we, so we have, by code, have to have some landings. Then we move to the front, we start taking all this out. Right here, where this vehicle is here, there'll be a ramp that'll get us up to a landing that gets us into the front door. So everyone will be coming in there. That's Phase One ramp. Phase Two ramp, this is, this is closed and everybody can put the backside. Now over here is the interesting part. This is bits and pieces over, over 100 and, what, 100 and some years, ever since 1898. We could not find picture, we found pictures of this building, front, back, everywhere except Court Street side. So we weren't real sure what it looked like. And all this had to go through the DRC and historical folks that make sure you put the buildings back just like they are. And this is what they agreed to let us do. Now, this is the way it looks now. All the granite that we take out anywhere has to be put back. This used to be an entrance into the basement. And if you, let me see if this works. It don't work. There it is. Right here. What in the world? Right there's a door. So this used to be steps into the basement. Okay? There we go. There was a window or something here, cause there, there's a mantle. This used to be a door. And if you go downstairs now, this is really, if, if you look there, you'll see, that's the cabinet of, of our mailroom in our copy room. So these doors, I don't know when the last time they were used, but it's no time recently. If you go out this door. Oh man, come on David, here we go. I knew it was too good, there. If you go out this door right here, where it says step down, you come out right here. Right here on Court Street. That's, that, that is our way of getting out of here if something would happen.
We have to leave those door, the other two doors that we're not-
That's a good question.
I shouldn't say the doors, do we have to leave those steps?
Well, that's, that's another good question. These steps weren't, weren't original because of how they're made. But there are pieces of granite that was on something that was original in 1898. So, what the city of Statesville has allowed us to do, first phase is right there.
That looks much better.
Okay. So, we're able to build this. And the first phase of it, keep this in mind, the first phase, these doors stay. So in the project, when we get through, this is what it, in the scope of this project that, that you approved, this is what it's gonna look like. We take out all this extra concrete and things that were kinda added on over the years. We have to use the same marble. If you go out there, you'll see it. We gotta be able to put back the marble that we, even if it's broken, we gotta use it. And this is what it's gonna look like when we get through. Now but, the but is that our next picture is this one. You see that one? The doors are there. But this, within two years of doing all this work, we've got to do this. That part, changing that door to that window is not part of this project. This part is in what I call, what do I call it?
I don't know, it's in the, in the brick re-pourning.
No, no, I've got, I've got all kinds. I'm sorry, here, yes. This is Project 2U, that means Phase Two Underground. Project 4E is Phase Four Exterior. This, what we're looking at here is Phase Four Exterior Window and Brickwork. Which is also in the CIP.
Need that app on my phone.
Government Center, Government Center, Phase Four. E is Exterior Window W or B for Brick. And that's what it's gonna look like. And actually, they're letting us do this, providing within two years, we make that look like this. That, that was how we got the approval.
Gotta find two old windows.
we can't buy windows to put in this building.
Gotta make them.
Uh, we got, first, we gotta be able to try to find them. Now this part of it can be modified. You see that arch? It'll look like this one right here. See there? So this part, they, pretty sure they can keep that arch and just build back. And then add these windows of what, whatever. Whenever we do Project 4EW, which is Government Center, Phase Four Exterior Windows, all these windows have to be removed, refurbished, and put back. And if you wanna know how it's done, look at the clock tower building. It's the top floor, right across from them. That, that's what they've been doing there. And that's, that's the way this, these windows will be done. So just wanna make sure that you understand, this is what we're gonna look like. Right there. We're gonna look like that. And then this piece gets moved up here, this piece of granite gets moved up here. And then we add windows and shore all this up to make it look like that. And they, the best we can determine, from Steve Hill's collection and what the city of Statesville was telling us, this is probably the way it looked when it was built. Now this is the back of the building. This is 1936. And I would imagine our waterproofing project will go pretty quick back here because these have a different type of foundations. These are real, this is real brick and, and concrete. So they may let us just go all the way across the back. This is on the other side of the breezeway that you folks, if you walk through there, it's on your right, that you really don't see anything but vegetation. But there's a walkway that goes into a public entrance there. Most of this vegetation's gone. This'll all be dug out where we can get down to the, below the foundation and put drainage in. And then, remember, this project is called Waterproofing and Drainage. The drainage piece actually begins right in here with a stormwater line. Runs all the way down, runs down past the parking lot where you, some of you park in the back, to right here. It cuts diagonally across our parking lot and it goes into an existing catch basin. Which goes down to Front Street. Yes, Front Street. Also, there's drainage that goes up, this concrete area where the bushes are, that, you know, this last phase. There'll be another drainage line goes through there. Very exciting project. We, we waterproofed the top. Water quit coming in the roof. Now we're waterproofing the bottom because we got a lot of water running through the bottom. And then after that, is Phase Four, which is re-pourning and sealing the brick. And that's where the moisture comes through. And refurbishing these windows, which desperately need it. Now the windows that are completely rotted, we, we, we have to even use the same old glass. They call it glazing. Use the same glazing, put it back in, and they rebuild in a shop, not here. These windows come out. So when we're doing this part, these windows will probably be gone. Plywood it up, then they'll bring them back in. Any questions on Project 2U? Government Center, Phase Two Underground.
Any questions?
Nope.
Thank you. Sounds good.
Is that good for now?
Yes.
Or, I mean, I can keep going. I mean, no problem on my side.
We'll, we'll spread the joy around.
Spread the joy. Well, folks, this is what Manager Mole has to hear, hour and a half to two hours, every two weeks.
Every two weeks.
And more detail than this. But thank you. And we'll be back next month, whenever.
Well, next, next meeting.
He wants you to do it every meeting.
Well, until, until you've done the, finished your opus, then, then we can go on to updates.
Okay. Now, Commissioner Haupt asked for a written report of what I present. Most of my presenting-
I just wanna update, just of the, of the numbers, you know, if there's any issues and problems.
Budget numbers.
Budget numbers, that's it.
Not all the slides and everything.
And, and from my perspective, my intent on this for the future would just be, our budgeted things, if there's any issues, problems, is it going as planned? Real short, brief, you know, problematic type things.
Well, to make sure everybody gets it, it'll come out in your fourth packet.
Sure.
Right?
Yes, they will.
Something will come out that'll give you the numbers. Right now, all our projects are in the starting up stage because we just brought a bunch of them down.
Right.
But we had a tremendous amount of what you're talking about.
Yeah, appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, David. All right. Let's see. Commissioner Haupt?
I just had a couple, I just wanted to, on, I think our behalf to reiterate what you said, I think it was worth mentioning again, the budget team's effort, the staff's effort, the work that's gone into, over this past year to maintain the tax rate and the fire tax rate. And I wanted to thank our employees and our staff for the, the efforts they give our citizens. And I think with an increasing expectation from our citizens in a growing county, I wanted to thank our citizens, you know, for the flexibility over this past year and the grace they've shown in a lot of ways with our staff and, and, and us having to, the mandates and requirements that our staff and everyone's had to work through that we don't control. And I wanted to thank them for that. And I know it's been frustrating and emotional to navigate through some of these things, but I think it's worth mentioning again, from our perspective, thanking our staff for what they have done and the efforts to serve our citizens. And on behalf of Liz and I and our- On behalf of Lyson and our, and our Education Task Force, our staff and you guys, I wanted to congratulate the students and staff and parents for completing another school year through all of this stressful situation, um, wish the graduates well in their endeavors, and, uh, wish everyone a normal and safe summer.
Thank you, Gene. Anything further?
I'll just say very briefly, uh, you know, a big tip of the hat to Iredale County employees and the departments, because, uh, as you've looked around, uh, different governments have had different operating hours, if at all.
We didn't shut down.
Uh, in some levels of government. I know, uh, I don't know how long the Social Security Administration's been out, I'm gonna be back, but, uh, the upside is, uh, Iredale County departments, uh, never closed down for a day. They just operated under different conditions to meet the, uh, uh, public health concerns and threat, and, uh, they drove on and accommodated it, and, uh, so hats off to all our department heads and our staff for, uh, uh, being a present and accounted for through the duration. And, uh, so, anything further? Is there a motion to adjourn?
No move.
Motion by Commissioner Brown by a nose. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.